...in such a way, go about in such a way that glorifies you. We pray that you will lead and guide and direct us and bless this time together. In Jesus' name, everybody said, amen. At this time, we'd like to acknowledge our employee of the month from Public Works. We ask Mr. Anthony Musgrove, the Public Works Director, to come forward. And the employee of the month would be Mr. Joe McKinnon. On June 23rd... Oh, you gonna read it? Okay, you got it, you got it, you got it.
You could if you would.
I'd like to read something to you, to you all. On June 23rd, 2023, the Public Works Department received a phone call from a citizen wanting to commend Mr. Joe McKinnon. The citizen explained that she had taken her garbage can out to the curb that morning for pickup. As the garbage truck pulled up to empty her can, she took an extra bag out to do a pickup. As she returned to her porch, she stepped in a pool of water and fell. The citizen stated Mr. McKinnon saw that she had fallen and had come to her rescue. She said that she was, that Mr. McKinnon was such a gentleman and was so very respectful to her that she wanted to call management and commend Mr. McKinnon for his professional behavior. The citizen stated that if it were not for Mr. McKinnon, she may have laid there until someone found her later on. So it is not only Mr. McKinnon's actions, but also his level of care and respect that led to the citizen's call and makes Mr. McKinnon worthy of employee of the month.
Well deserved, well deserved, woman.
We're gonna present Mr. McKinnon with this city of, you know, our employee of the month for the month of July. Along with, if you don't have any one, if you don't like, we'll keep this. We're gonna present this to you as well, along with this plaque that we hang outside of the mayor's office. As long as you're here. So would you mind standing and giving another round of applause? All right. Thank you.
All right, thank you.
The minutes from the, um, 2000, June 8th, 2023 regular meeting. Are there any additions or subtractions? They'll be approved by acclamation. The first item we have is a public hearing item, which will need to be untabled.
I make a motion to untable Agenda Item Number 4A for consideration. I need a second.
All in favor? All opposed? All right, this next public hearing item will be presented to us by Matt Martin for the rezoning of 2.20 acres by the Mac House Investment LLC. Property is located on 2012, 2016 West Alden Avenue and 207 and 209 West Cranford Avenue.
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mayor Protan. This is a planned development request for that property. That's 2.2 acres. It's bounded by North Oak Street, West Cranford Avenue, and West Alden Avenue. This was a tabled item from a month ago on June 8th to allow time for the applicant to reconfigure their master plan a little bit, which has been done. We have also re-advertized the case for final public hearing this evening. It also went back to the Plan Commission at the meeting on June 26th. Zoning pattern, like we talked about the work session, we're remembering back to last year when we rezoned the northern part of this property from DR10 to R6 to allow a little different mix of development standards. That has been accomplished in those before you as a proposal for a planned mixed residential development in terms of houses only instead of duplexes. And running through the maps, character area is still the same as established residential, which allows residential development, residential zonings, which fits the subject property. Aerial imagery, you see the apartment complex of the pattern to the north, urban forestry of the area over the subject property, and that's indicative of an older neighborhood. Survey is in your packet. Most of the property is vacant. The property has two existing single-family residences that are historic. This property is in the local historic district as well as the Brookwood North National Register District. The two existing houses are what we call contributing resources to the National Register District. Subject property, one of the houses, this one we call the Gulliver House, is at the corner of Oak and Alden. Immediately to the east is the McDonald House. Both houses have been empty for a while. They are in need of some TLC. And that is, part of the applicant's proposal is to fix them up. And then moving quickly through these pictures, subject property is seen from Oak Street, looking a little bit into the interior. As you look southward from West Cranford, some shots of the interior, most of it has been cleared, there's underbrush, some large trees. This is the backside of the McDonald House. There's also some large camilla bushes within the property, which have been a point of discussion. But just like the houses, they also need some TLC. And then some of the tree canopy that covers over part of the property. Jason, pictures of properties around it show the apartments to the north, which is the Timbers Apartment Complex. Part of the two-story building sits up close to West Cranford. And then the view down Cranford toward North Patterson Street. And some professional offices also on Cranford as you get closer to Patterson. And then this is the views looking down Oak Street with the subject property immediately on the left. Single-family residents diagonally across. This is from the intersection of Oak and Alden. And then some single-family residences on the south side of Alden. Some of these are renter occupied instead of homeowner. This is on the north side of West Alden, immediately next to the subject property. Zoning patterns, of course, indicate the land use pattern, mostly single-family homes. And even though it's zone DR10 in areas to the east and south, you see the R15 zoning on the other side of Oak Street, that's indicative of a little water density area. But more importantly, in terms of the land use pattern, the RP zoning to the north, you see there's a lot of it through there that is offices, but also the multifamily development. Plan development is intended to offer some creativity and actually encourage creativity in site design as opposed to just conventional development. There's usually trade-offs involved with that, and we'll get more to that in a moment. One of the things we do when analyzing a plan development is we look at the conventional design scenario first as sort of a base starting point. In this case, based on existing zoning, the property can be developed today as eight lots with each containing a duplex, perhaps shown in this configuration. It would, of course, still have to go through Historic Preservation Commission for approval. But in terms of density, many different ways to lay it out. But you could do eight duplexes for a total of 16 dwelling units. The applicant is proposing as an alternative to do no duplexes at all, but instead do 10 houses on 10 individual lots. You still have the same number of lots around the perimeter, but then you have a couple on the interior. And the only way to make that work, to grant access to interior lots, is through this proposed private road system, which would be a shared common area for the development. You still have the three dwellings along West Alden to the south on larger lots. And the northern part will be all new development, but in the form of a clustered residential village surrounded by seven-and-a-half-foot decorative wall and fence combination with everything facing the interior. Pretty much a unique design, cannot be built this way conventionally, hence the planned development. Tree survey, we had talked about at the work session. We knew that was going to be a point of concern for the development on this property. But as a reminder, conventionally, and even not conventionally, but there is no protection of interior trees. The property is owned, single-family residential or duplex. Trees are exempt from permitting requirements. The only caveat is that the trees around the perimeter in the public right-of-way are under the jurisdiction of the City Office, as are trees near the city right-of-way but overhang the right-of-way. Those are also under the jurisdiction. Fortunately, the City Office has already been to the site at least three times, has looked at the trees and made some notes as to which trees would be under jurisdiction. The actual administration of that will come at the time of development. This is still conceptual design planning stage. We do not have specific footprints for the houses yet. But as the subdivision comes forward for plan review and actually review of construction drawings, land disturbance permit, that's when the tree review process kicks in. Part of the proposal, of course, is to renovate the existing two houses that are each about 2,000 square feet. This is a third house on Alden that's proposed, almost to 3,200 square feet. Beautiful house that's there in design. Historic Preservation Commission has already reviewed this. They have already granted their approval for the new construction of this house. They have already granted approval for the renovation of the second house, which is the McDonald House. And they've also granted their approval for the concept design of the lot layout. The caveat is that all the new construction for the new houses individually come back to them for final review of the architectural plans, which means they would review plans similar to this and all the drawings that go with it and grant approvals individually for each of the new houses. Three-dimensional view of that third house that's being proposed. And then some other graphics in your packet include this. This is the aerial view, multi-view from West Alden Avenue looking northward. You see the private road system at the middle and then what some of the houses would be. And then the opposite view from looking over West Cranford, looking southward. This one, you get a better view of the seven-and-a-half-foot decorative wall that would run around the perimeter of that cluster of seven houses. And as you see here, one of the things the applicant is contemplating is shared driveway with good access to the rear. Kind of what we used to see in old subdivisions from 100 years ago, which would be a neat concept, I think, to come back to the historic district. In the packet is a list of deviations that go with the master development plan. In the relative plan of almost, this one has very few, only four are listed. Relatively minor scope, but the main ones are the common area for the shared access. Would be a private road that is a 40-foot wide right-of-way instead of the standard 50. And the other main item is the individual building setbacks on the interior. Will be less than what the current zoning would allow, but the perimeter setbacks are very close to what the code would require. So the difference is on the inside. Many times we see a lot more deviations. In exchange for that, the applicant is giving up a lot of what would normally be the development rights of the R6 or DR10 zoning in terms of uses of land and density and so forth. Plan Commission reviewed this at the meeting on June 26th. They're recommending approval subject to nine conditions, which are there in your packet. And we can go through those in some detail if you would like. Also in your packet, among many other things, is a petition from local neighbors and property owners. It is two pages long. And they have requested that the petition be read into the record of the meeting. So I will go ahead and do that. "We, undersigned homeowners residing in and adjacent to the Brookwood North Historic District ask that the following concerns and requests of ours be carefully considered and be read into the record at each public meeting in consideration of the proposed Mac House Plan Development bounded by North Oak Street, West Alden Avenue, and West Cranford Avenue. This property has for many decades been a rare example of an open green space surrounded by historic neighborhood, and it has many tall canopy trees that are important to the character of our neighborhood. We ask that sensitivity be shown for the goal of preserving as many of these specimen canopy trees as possible during both planning and construction. Exact placement and alignment of buildings, driveways, etc. should be decided after the location of specimen canopy trees are precisely determined so that whatever adjustments might be made in footprints will be made in preservation of important trees. We believe this will constitute added value to many prospective homeowners and future neighbors just as many of us bought our homes in part because they were in a weirded neighborhood. We also urge the owner and developer to meet with us to discuss this issue more specifically." And what you have in that petition is two pages of signatures. And also we've prepared a map showing where these petitioners reside in proximity to the subject property. The applicant is here. I think many of these petitioners are here as well. I'll be glad to answer any questions you might have.
Does anyone have any questions, ma'am?
Correct. If they are overhanging city right-of-way, even though they be on private property, regardless of zoning, those fall under the Arbor's jurisdiction. And ones within the right-of-way. Arbor's has made the notes, in terms of round numbers, it's roughly a dozen trees around the perimeter or within the right-of-way. There's about another dozen that fall close to the right-of-way that will be getting a second look. And then when it comes time to develop, whenever that might be, as part of the land disturbance process, the subdivision design plan process is when a more closer detailed look will be given. Some of the trees will probably be more worthy of preserving than others. The Arbor's did know that some trees on there are not in the best of health. And it depends on, at the time that this occurs, as to what their status is at that time. The developer and I have had many conversations about it, and I can't speak for him. He'll tell you himself, but I know his desire is to try and preserve as much of it as feasible.
Any other questions, ma'am?
I just want to, would the developer be here to speak to me?
He is here in the office tonight.
I just want to ask him.
I'm sure he's eager to talk to you.
Thank you.
All right, with this being a public hearing item, is there anyone here that would like to speak in favor of this proposal? We ask that each one of you hold your comments to three minutes.
Good evening, council members. Bill Hyrum, 1,007 North Patterson Street. I'm an attorney at Langdon R. Alton, and I've helped the applicant throughout this project get to this point. And this is the developer.
Yeah, I'm Avery Walden at 5167 River North Circle in Hayharem. Glad to be here. We'd be glad to answer any questions, any more questions.
Does anyone have any questions for Ms. Walden?
I just have that one question. Well, we're looking at everything and developing, their development is fine. My question is, when we were talking about the road and everything, like you're gonna be putting a road in here, and then one, is that made clear about who is responsible for taking care of that road?
Yes, it is. And that's part of the condition. The city and Mr. Walden and Mr. Martin have been working for probably six months to really tie down and iron out these conditions. As you saw, there are quite a few conditions. I believe there's nine of them connected to this PD application. And one of those is that there will be HOA that will be responsible for maintaining the road. It's gonna be a private road. It's not gonna be a public road. So the property owners of those 10 lots will be responsible for maintaining that road. And the only other real common area that we're gonna have there is probably a detention area that's gonna be maintained by the HOA too and some green space that's around the road and adjacent to the houses. But that is spelled out, and covenants are required, and HOA is required. And it's explicitly stated that the road is to remain a private road.
And that's with each person, after one person moves out, maybe move out of that house and someone else move in, that does?
It runs with the property. So yes, those covenants would run with the property in effect and carry with the property. So as one owner moves out, the other owner comes in and assumes those obligations. That's right.
I just wanted to talk about at the time, maybe like for 10 years or 15 or 20, is no, so it's forever?
Yeah, it would be perpetual.
Forever, okay.
It would be 20 if, for the homeowners. So about the best we can do is 20. That's true. Last Tuesday night, or last night, actually, 20 years for the homeowners, but it would take 100. They could be renewed, but it would take 100% if I'm not mistaken to renew it. So I think they're doing it to the maximum extent. Georgia law for, I think it's residential subdivisions, are under 35 lots or 25 lots, I can't remember, Mr. Tanner may remember, are limited to 20 years, but you can renew the covenants for another 20-year term.
That's what I was wondering, after one, 10, well, one homeowner moved out, the other one, is it start, does it start over for another 20 years?
It doesn't start another 20 years, no ma'am.
So it's just...
It's 20 years from when the covenants are recorded, and then you can renew them for another 20 years after that period runs.
With the 100% of the homeowners agrees, right? Okay, that's what I'm trying to get straight in my head. Thank you.
But we're excited about this project. I mean, you've got Mr. Walden, you know, a prior winner of a Historic Preservation Award. We're in the historic district. Everything's gonna have to go back through the Historic Preservation Commission with plans with these houses. So I think it'll be a good project for the city and for this area, and we're really looking forward to it. I think Mr. Martin's been behind it. The Planning Commission is behind it on an eight-to-one vote. And so we just ask that you follow their recommendation and staff's recommendation and approve, approve the application. We're happy to answer any other questions y'all have. I hope so, yeah. We hope it will be a showcase for the city. We do.
Any other questions? Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anyone in the audience that'd like to speak in opposition of this project? Wait, wait a minute. Is there anyone else who would like to speak in favor? Say your name.
Patrick Myers. I live at 1906 North Oak Street. I'm on the southwest corner of North Oak and West Alden. And the proposed project is catty corner to my house. We bought this house a little over 35 years ago, and for 35 years, I've gone out the front door or the driveway and seen a vacant home. Sometimes it almost looks like it's an abandoned house. I mean, they try to keep it up. But anyway, the, when the apartments were built on the north border of the historic district, and then I see all the red signs, you know, notice, my wife and I are concerned whether somehow in the future that might be rezoned and another set of apartments. But anyway, when we found out that the property is going to be developed and redeveloped into housing rather than duplexes or apartments or professional buildings, we were really excited about it. So I traveled around the neighborhood to look at some of the properties that the developer has done, and their curb appeal is fantastic. And I signed the petition about the canopy, and I gave it some thoughtful consideration that it would be nice to have that remain, I guess, renewed because I live there and have to see that every day, that trees can be planted and moved, the apartments or whatever, forever. So we're excited that that property is gonna be developed and brought back to life. It definitely enhances the neighborhood.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. Is there anyone else that'd like to speak in favor of this proposal?
You say until they stop coming?
Good evening. I'm gonna talk a little louder because my parents are here, and I would like for them to be able to hear me.
You can pull it down.
Pull it down. Oh, okay, sorry, I have to stand on my chair. Okay. Good evening. My name is Susan McDonald Morgan, and I'm here tonight with my husband David. We currently live at 96203 Montego Bay in Fernandina Beach, Florida. I'm the daughter of Ernest and Barbara McDonald, the granddaughter of Ernest and Virginia McDonald, the great-granddaughter of Ernestine McDonald, all of whom have lived and resided in this home. And the selling of this home has been a real difficult decision for our family. Over the years, many investors have come to our parents wanting to turn these two old homes into duplexes and build the other duplexes. And as Ms. Martin mentioned, yes, they could build eight, that makes 16 units. Each of those 16 units could have three to four bedrooms. Now look at the parking issue. You're looking at 50 to 74 parking spaces that would be needed for that. So needless to say, when Avery approached us in '21, it's been a long process. But when he approached our family, we were thrilled with his vision for this project, for this property. And after seeing the work that he had done on so many of the homes in this historic neighborhood, it really even impressed us more because he wanted to make sure each of those homes not only was restored or remodeled, but that it contributed to the value of the neighborhood with the way he did it. Our family has been McDonald nurtures and landscaping since my grandmother started selling flowers and shrubs at this property to her church ladies, her friends, some of our relatives. And then my dad, after coming back from the Air Force in 1962, added the landscape division. I guess I'd say all of that because my brother then went into the business as well, selling and planting trees all over Lounes County and Valdosta. My brother, Buddy McDonald, he decided that his career would take him a different path, and he now works out at the airport here with his love for flying in planes. My point is that between the last four generations, the McDonald's have planted and shared and beautified Lounes County and Valdosta to the point that now it's even known as the Azaria City. We were very excited and proud about that. In fact, only one family has planted more trees in Lounes County than the McDonald's, and that's the Landals. But the Landals cut theirs down at the end. The McDonald's have only grown things for beautification and to sustain green spaces in a lot of our parks here, even in Valdosta. When it comes to trees and beautifying our community and historic preservation and making a balance for progress, our family understands these things extremely well. In fact, when my husband and I read the petition for the trees, the first thing he said was, "Honey, I think we probably would have signed that petition too." And the reason is, we love trees that much. And if we had not known who was doing this project and the love that I know our family has... has had for trees and for shrubbery and for beautification around town, I would have been concerned about what was going to happen to the trees as well. I do have to say that Coach Ryder was my math teacher back in the 70s and he said, "It ain't bragging if it's true." Well, part of the truth is that my husband and I have never lived in a new house. We've always only lived in old homes. And right here in this room, about 30 years ago, I was working for the city of Valdosta in the Main Street program and they got canceled the development for redoing all of the downtown. And I went around and in six months convinced everybody it was something that needed to be done and we needed to preserve our downtown and bring the economy back to downtown Valdosta. And I was given the Employee of the Month award right here. It wasn't anything nearly as heroic as was mentioned earlier tonight, but I was very proud of that because we love history and we love Lounes County and Valdosta. And with Avery's vision of this property, everything just seemed to fit very well. The more that my husband and I began to see what he was going to do with it, the more we felt the tug. My husband David and I are excited to say that we are going to be the new owners of the McDonald House. With Avery's help, he will be our contractor and we will be making 212 our home, our forever home. We will be keeping the McDonald House in the family and our grandchildren and my great nieces and nephews will be the sixth generation to pray and play in this wonderful old house blessed by God for our family. We are committed to moving, planting, transplanting, taking down and beautifying this property to the best of our ability. And David and I have worked on three projects in downtown Apalachicola, the Blue Moon Inn, the Charm, the Morgan Quarters. We've worked with the Historic Preservation Committees and all of that. And then we've just finished an 1850's home in Fernandina Beach and we've just sold it as well. It was our home, but we're moving back to Valdosta. Concerning the petition, we want everyone that signed it to know that we are on your side speaking to them and that we do intend to make sure this property is treated well. We know this will be a historic reflection on the legacy of our family and on what will be called the McDonald Morgan Home. We want to help make this a project that Valdosta and Lounes County will also be proud of for generations to come. Thank you for your time and your service and thank you for listening to me today. I am in favor of this project. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else in the audience who'd like to speak in favor of this project? Seeing none, is there anyone in favor, in the audience who'd like to speak in opposition of this project? Come forward and state your name.
How y'all doing?
How you doing?
It's not necessarily against it yet.
Your name?
Oh, my name, I'm Lewis Gordon, y'all. How y'all doing? Hey, I just have a few questions. Number one, we're talking about a homeowners' association. Who manages the homeowners' association?
You go ahead, we'll get back.
Also, who, there are, you say 10 homes that will be available here that they're building? How does one have access to buying one of those homes? Those are my two questions.
We would have someone get with you, you stay after the meeting?
Say nothing?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Yes. Is there anyone else in the audience who'd like to speak in opposition of this project? Seeing none, I'd like to turn it over to council for action.
Mr. Mayor Proton, I'd like to make a motion to approve the request along with the nine conditions as stated by staff.
We have a motion by Councilman Carroll. Second by Councilman McIntyre. All in favor? Unanimous. All right, that carries. Next, we have another presentation that'll be presented by Matt Martin. The ordinance to rezonate 31.26 acres for community, from community development to multifamily residential. The property is located at 25T East Park Avenue and 4595 Inner Perimeter.
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mayor Proton. Zoning map on the screen and also in your packet shows the mixed zoning pattern that is in this area. This subject property is actually part of a larger parcel that is more than 75 acres. It is the CC zoning area that you see outlined as well as the RM zoning area that's to the east as well as the small CC zoning area to the southwest that fronts Inner Perimeter Road. It's all one parcel, currently undeveloped. Applicant is proposing to develop this as a single-family residential subdivision with R10 density and R10 development standards. However, R10 zoning is not eligible as a new zoning district in this area. So, he is proposing RM to match the existing RM that is there, which allows residential development at all densities. Character area, Community Activity Center, that is the part of the city policy that mandates the more intensive zonings. Area imagery, it's all forested through most of the area here. You see Inner Perimeter Road is the dominant feature. In the lower left corner of the map on the screen is part of the New Valdosta High School on Inner Perimeter. And then Lakeland Highway running to the north, to the northeast is the New Harvest Methodist Church as well as the Methodist Children's Home across the street and a little bit of commercial development nearby on Inner Perimeter. You may remember the zoning case from a few months ago, there was similar circumstances for RM zoning on the other side of Inner Perimeter off of Lakeland Highway. The difference is, the proposal there was for R6 density. This one is R10 density, but also three times as many houses. Survey shows some wetlands on the property, which will be reevaluated when it comes time for subdivision review. The conceptual lot layout, we'll link, is 212 houses is also there in your packet, showing the area that's proposed at least immediately for housing in some area that might be held and reserved for commercial development. Subject property along Inner Perimeter Road, you see the undeveloped nature along both sides of the highway. The property itself is what I call the South Georgia jungle. This is looking southward down Inner Perimeter toward the new high school. The view northward toward the Inner Perimeter and Lakeland Highway intersection and then views along Lakeland Highway both to the west and the east. The reference point here is that it's straight across from the intersection of Stallings Road and then near the Methodist Children's Home as well as New Harvest Methodist Church. Planing Commission reviewed this at their public hearing on June the 26th. They found the request consistent with the comprehensive plan. It stands for exercise of zoning power, which are there in your packet, and they are recommending approval. We're glad to answer any questions you may have.
Anyone have any questions to Matt? Thank you, Matt. As before, this is a public hearing item. Anyone in the audience wishing to speak in favor of this item, please come forward. All right, state your name.
I'm Larry Sanders with Arrow Engineering. I'm the engineer on the proposed project.
I'm Cole Livingston, the builder of this project. And I just want to say, you know, we're excited to bring these new homes to the city of Valdosta and, you know, we've been getting a lot of backlash and people guessing saying we're doing low-income housing. And I just want to state that we're going to build, you know, nice medium-priced houses that I think will bring the community up, you know. Thank you.
And I just want to reiterate what Matt said, that this rezoning is primarily was at the city's request to clear up a mixed zoning use. We could have built what we're planning to build now as everything was currently zoned and we could have built something more dense than what we're planning to build. I live and operate here in Lounes County and I've known Mr. Cole his entire life. He comes from a family of builders. They build nice homes. And I just want to encourage the city to support this and it's going to be a nice development that everybody can be proud of.
Thank you. Does anyone have any questions?
I just want to ask one more question. What is your idea of a medium-income house? Medium-income house?
These houses will be between 215 to 250 range.
Okay.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Thank you. Is there anyone else in the audience who'd like to speak in favor of this proposal? Seeing none, is there anyone in the audience who'd like to speak in opposition? Come forward and state your name.
My name's Brian Levitt. I am the treasurer and member of the HOA of the Cottonwood neighborhood, which is on the exact road where this was proposed to be developed or to change. In understanding this rezoning petition, we sought out what the overall desire of the neighborhood was, given what impact might be in place, given these changes. And so, we did, we did ask our members to sign the petition. I did get a petition here with 49 individual signatures for taxpayers in our community particularly. We have, and to save your and the valuable time of everybody behind me, I'll summarize three primary issues with this. The number one issue, if you'll see, I don't know if we can back up to the picture of the roadway. The roadway is already very congested. This roadway needs no additional help with vehicles. Already in the mornings, this is backed up all the way to Stallings because of the multiple school zones that are in this area. Further development of hundreds of homes that we brought onto this with the lack of infrastructure in place now represents a security threat, a hazard to health and potentially many other problems unless the city would be willing to take on larger infrastructure properties such as expanding that road or considering further development out towards Inner Perimeter and letting that be the primary inroad or outroad of this particular subdivision. The problem is, right here where Stallings dumps into Lakeland Highway is already where we see wrecks pretty regularly. What we're proposing is having an inlet outlet right here. This, of course, may already, you may say, is already zoned this way, but obviously that's not what's getting developed here. Further, we would like to see the original intention of the zoning be held too. We think there was wisdom in the way it was originally designed. We think that it'll attract the right type of person and we think it'll attract the right type of traffic and it'll be attractive at the time that we have the infrastructure to handle the traffic. I'd like to submit into the record for the council members this original set of signatures. Leave this here and I am, of course, open and available for your questions.
Does anyone have any questions?
I just want to ask you this. Had you brought this up to our planner, to Matt Martin?
No, this has not been addressed with Matt Martin.
Anybody?
I'm sorry?
With anyone?
With the entire community that we made it public to. This was just on behalf of the HOA.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else in the audience who'd like to speak in opposition of this project?
My name is Rob Tomer. I live at 2011 Cotton Bay Plaza, which is a house in the Cottonwood subdivision. And it'll be two years, October, that my wife and family moved to Cottonwood. Moved out of, from East Magnolia and moved into Cottonwood because it's real quiet, kind of rural, nice, real nice subdivision where there's spaces between the houses. And this project, if approved, 200 houses, that's a lot of houses. And for the amount of spacing, 215 I think it was called, 215 or 250, that seems like an awful high amount for cramming in 200 houses. And like Brian had said, the traffic and all of that. I'm retired military, finally used my VA loan a little more than two years ago to purchase the house. One of the reasons was it was quiet, rural. I drove down the street, heard the crickets. And with 200 houses, I'm a quarter mile away from the East Park Avenue entrance. 200 houses, I know they all won't be coming in and out of there, but that's a lot, lot more people. And also, you know, beautiful Valdosta High School. You know, just the size of this seems pretty enormous. And I don't know, you might want to take a look at that. And the other thing I'm not too sure about was the zoning change to multi-family. And I have a question on that. Does multi-family mean that it could turn into from single dwellings to apartment houses? Because it's zoned RM. So, that's a question I have. I'll stick around and have that answered.
So, I will ask Matt.
Okay. And there was other people in the subdivision, they were really concerned about that, that it could turn into a big apartment complex. All right, well, thank you very much for your consideration.
Matt, after this young lady here, you don't mind answering that question?
Young lady, huh? Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. My name's Diana Dooley. I live at 201 West Gordon Street here in Valdosta. I'm from the San Francisco Bay area. You're proposing to put 212 houses on 31 and a quarter acres. That is, wake up in the morning, look out the window, count your neighbor's pores. This isn't, you really don't want to do that many houses in that space. This is not fun. I've lived like that. It's awful. You don't want to do this, or at least not that many houses. Thank you.
All right, is there anyone else in the audience who'd like to speak in opposition?
My name is Shailene Westover. Our family resides at 3090 Stallings Way and have since 2020 when we moved here. I share some of the same concerns that have been spoken before with the traffic on the corner of that intersection of Lakeland Parkway and Stallings Road. My husband travels to work going in that direction and many days he can't even, he can't even get out in a reasonable amount of time and so, I go in opposite direction to get to work to avoid that area. We have a child who rides the bus, so there is a lot of traffic on our road already with people coming up and down the road and then buses going slow as well. And in the short time that we have lived there, we've seen a lot of car accidents in that intersection as well. And adding this volume of homes to this area, I think, would really be a detriment to the area. Another concern I have is that it appears it backs up to where a gas station is. A gas station that's not well-kept, not well-run, and that concerns me for families in the area as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else in the audience that'd like to speak in opposition? Matt, if you'd like to address some of their concerns about what can already be built there and the question about the zoning?
Having heard all of this, there was not this much commentary at the Planning Commission meeting, but the simple truth of it is the property is already zoned for multifamily residential or less at very high density. After the Planning Commission meeting, I went and did some math on it. As it is currently zoned without any public hearings, 75 acres of land, 1,788 apartments can be built there now. Even after the rezoning, a lot of that is still possible, but what the applicant is proposing, instead of very dense apartments, to do a single-family subdivision under R10 density, which is quarter-acre lots. For a better comparison, RM zoning allows dwelling units multifamily at 18 units per acre. The R10 density is the same as roughly four units per acre. So, what they are proposing... So what they are proposing is far less dense than what is currently zoned. And if someone wanted to do density of apartments, the property is already zoned that way. The CC zoning allows apartments at 60 bedrooms per acre without a public hearing. So that changes the math a little bit, but very dense. And that's what happens when you have 75 acres of land to do density development. That is not what the applicant is proposing, but needs a residential zoning really at my request to get rid of the awkward geography that is there now. So we do not end up with a single-family subdivision with commercial zoning running through the middle of it, particularly at a zigzag pattern. So that's why the request is before you. But in terms of density and what's allowed, it currently can be built at very high density. Fortunately, the applicant is proposing a lot less.
Thank you.
Can I ask a follow-up question to Matt? Matt, in, in your experience with our land use pattern throughout the city of Valdosta, and in particular out here along inner perimeter, don't you believe this is probably one of the greatest areas that we're going to see residential growth and some commercial growth over the next 10, 20, 30 years?
Correct. And the app in your packet, which is the character area map, there's the land use policy pattern. The more intensive is to be around this intersection of perimeter and Lakeland Highway. And as you go out from that intersection, the intensity of development is planned to be lower as you go back. And what they're proposing is sort of in the outer parts of that intensive area. But a lot of undeveloped land, a large school nearby, other schools down the street, that tends to be an attractor for residential development. And our desire really is for quality development to take place here in a good organized way. I'm glad to see that someone has master planned 75 acres under one plan rather than piecemeal.
Yeah, yeah.
Now, another thing like I shared with you at the work session, this is the first time in 14 years that we've had a proposed rezoning for a new subdivision at R10 density. Everything we've seen for 14 years has been at higher density. So I'm, it's very refreshing to have this much R10-type development being proposed.
Thank you.
There's already plans in the works for eventual improvements to Lakeland Highway. It is a state highway running through there. It carries some traffic now. It needs to be designed to eventually carry some more. Fortunately, an inter-perimeter road is there and has a very high capacity to it as it was designed to be. So those are all pluses for this area.
Any other questions for Matt?
So with the planning of the, of the density of expanding the roadway, it's going to have different type exits in and out that would be convenient for all residents in that area?
Correct. All new development standards, with an emphasis on public safety when it comes to driveway spacing, median cuts, all of that.
Thank you, Matt. I'd like to turn this over to council for motion.
I'd like to make a motion that we approve this request as stated.
Second.
The motion is second, all in favor? All opposed? Unanimous? Next, we'll have consideration for ordinance to rezone 6.32 acres from duplex residential to DR10 residential professional. And this was all, this property is located by, this request is made by the Park Avenue Church. The property is located at 100 East Park Avenue. Jeff will be presenting this. Matt, here.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. As you just stated, this application is to rezone 6.32 acres from DR10 to RP. The applicant is the Park Avenue Church. The property is located at the corner of East Park Avenue and North Patterson, backing up to Slater. I'm sure you're all pretty familiar with the property. This is an older neighborhood that was residential, it's now in transition. It's a mixture of residential, professional, and light commercial. You see the character area map. This is a transitional neighborhood. As I mentioned, it's institutional activity center to the north, it's established residential to the south. You see on the area map, the entire area within the boundary is the area that is proposed to be rezoned. This is the bulk of the church campus. You have the survey in your packets, of course, the parcel, the property consists of six parcels totaling 7.23 acres. All but about 0.91 acres are to be rezoned in this action. That's because the area along the road is already RP. We also have some photos of the subject property. This has been a church for many years. This is the main sanctuary building. This fronts North Patterson. Other structures include this historic Tudor-style house at the corner of Slater and East Park. I mentioned that the southern parcels on this property, namely the ones that touch East Park, are located within the local historic district. There are other buildings as well. Here's the children's building. This is the old parsonage building. And there are two existing houses on the northern parcels. They are owned by the church, this one here, and this one as well. These front Slater to the north of the church property. We also have some pictures from the interior of the property. This one looking east towards some of the church facilities from an interior parking lot, and another one looking northeast. From the other side of the building, you see the backs of the two houses that you saw earlier. As for the adjacent properties, there's the dentist's office to the north on Slater, Dr. Sommer's office. Looking north on site up in the same area, you see the hospital in the distance, the rear of the Baptist Church to the right. Looking south on Slater, you see the middle in front of the Baptist Church now on, now to the left. This is East Park Avenue, south of the church looking east, East Park Avenue looking west. And finally, on the other side of East Park to the south, we have an apartment building and another residence also across East Park to the south. So staff reviewed the application and found it to be consistent with the comprehensive plan and the emerging land use pattern. As mentioned in the work session, this rezoning really just helps clean up an outdated zoning classification. RP is what the block should be. The old neighborhood, once there, is gone. Of course, it also helps prepare the property for future growth. The city has received plans for a bus shelter and a parking area in the back of the property, but I accept, but I expect we'll, we'll see more in the coming months. As far as development goes, I think the applicant can probably speak more to that when he comes up here in a moment. But all said, staff recommends approval, the rezoning as proposed. The planning commission also reviewed this at their recent meeting and offered their unanimous support. So with that, I'll take any questions or let the applicant go.
Any questions for Jeff?
You filled mine in. I asked you yesterday, you wrote it back today and answered it.
Yep. Okay. Any other questions? Thank you, Jeff. This being a public hearing, is anyone in the audience who'd like to speak in support for this proposal?
My name is Clayton Morgan, 3998, inner perimeter road. We are the engineers helping with the rezoning process on this project, so I'm happy to answer any questions y'all may have regarding this rezoning request.
Any questions with Clayton? Thank you. Is there anyone else in the audience who'd like to speak in favor of this proposal? Seeing none, is there anyone in the audience who'd like to speak in opposition? Seeing none, I'd like to turn it over to council for motion.
Mr. Mayor Porton, make a motion to approve this request as presented. Second.
The motion is second, all in favor? All opposed? Motion carries. Next, we have bids, contracts, agreements, and expenditures presented to us by our director of utilities, Mr. Bradley Iris, for the purchase of 90.58 acres for a new water treatment plant.
Yes, thank you, Mayor Porton and council. This is a consideration request for purchase of 90.58 acres for a new secondary water plant and associated well field for the city of Valdosta. Previously, the mayor and council had given staff the ability to negotiate the purchase of sufficient acreage for, for the plant and well field. And based on water quality results and engineering studies done in the past, we concluded along with the consultants that this site is the most favorable and is owned by Southern Gateway LLC. Some facts and issues, water quality testing was done, and a test well on the site was installed by our consultants, and the results were returned favorably. The, as you see, we have a couple of plaits in the, or maps in the, in your packet there. One is a survey, it kind of shows a plat of the property and the larger piece of property. The next map there, you see bounded in yellow is the site, is the 90.58 acres that staff would intend to purchase, the city is proposing to purchase. Along with the purchase price, the part of the negotiation, we've also agreed to install 650 linear feet of 8-inch PVC water main, which will be determined at a later point on the development south of this property, when they go to develop and bring plans for permitting. That will be determined then as far as where that will be. One of the primary advantages of this location is its close proximity to our existing infrastructure. Additionally, the Valdosta Regional Airport is pleased with the additional city property use adjoining the property to the south here. Some administrative comments, timing's of the essence for, for us to be able to complete the water treatment plant, put the terms in the upper grant agreement. So we're looking to, you know, try to get that process underway here. Staff recommends to approve the purchase of the 90.58 acres in the amount of $2,845,000 for this new secondary plant. And with that, any questions, I'll be glad to answer.
Any questions? Seeing none, I turn it over to council for action.
I'd like to make a motion to approve this request presented.
Second.
The motion is second, all in favor? All opposed? Motion carries. All right, we come to the portion of our meeting where our citizens to be heard, the citizens to be heard portion of the meeting, where's that you come forward and state your name and address so that we may have it for the record. Our policy requires that you stay under three minutes so that others have time to be heard. Please direct all comments to council as a whole. Do not attempt to engage individual council members in debate. It's the council's policy to follow through with you on your concerns. Additionally, we ask that any groups that want to address the council designate one spokesperson to represent the group and their comments. Again, this will assure that others have time to be heard. Having said that, are there any citizens wishing to be heard?
Yes.
Thanks, sir.
How you doing? My name is Steve Freeman. I stay at 612 Second Avenue. I'd like to tell my councilman thank you for showing up this time as be there. The problem I have is I got, I stay at 612 and there's some property behind me. The city owns a lot back there, and we got an alley back there, and it's another lot addressed to that lot. Now, I've been cutting that lot for like nine months. So I called my councilman up in here, the city come out and take care of it. But here's what the city did when they got out there. The property I was cutting it, they draw the line, the sand cut boards, and left the rest. Now, the rest that was left, it, it's like a nuisance because it become a dumping area to a point when the city don't show up to take care of it, I got to come back to make sure it's done. Now, I got one of the owners here that owns trying to get one of the lots back there to keep it up. Now, the alleyway that's there, that's another problem. It's, I hauled it when I first moved here, almost eight loads of trash out of there that I paid for myself. So that's been a problem ever since I've been here. Been here for like three years. The property that's sitting back there that's the city own, I've been trying to get in touch with the land bank for the last nine months now to try to purchase the property. Nobody hasn't gotten in touch with me, but I've been cutting it. So now it's becoming a nuisance to the point where who can you get in touch with? My city council is doing all he can, so I'm just concerned. I hear they talk about the city trying to come up. But how it's going to come up if you're not addressing short issues that's in the city now that's causing major problems? Like abandoned houses, I got a house that's been sitting there for about eight months. I talked to the city manager and the mayor about it. So it is a nuisance now, they're not going through the windows, they can run up under the house getting inside of it. So whoever owns this property there, I don't quite understand how he is managing to get away with it for nine months and not being able to do anything about this abandoned house. And with that lot sitting back there too as well, I'd like to find somebody from the land bank so I can find out what they're going to do with the property, going to sell it to me? Or I'm going to have to keep calling from the keep, they cut the grass there.
Yes, sir. We'll be, we'll be giving, give you hope, wait after the meeting, we have someone from the land bank who can talk with you.
Thank you. And thanks again, Mr. Thomas.
I, I have a question for you.
Yes.
On that alley, do you think it'd be best if we closed it off? What, what's your opinion?
Yes, yes, if that alley was closed off, it would cut down some of the traffic, basically drug traffic coming through there, dumping trash. Even my neighbor, that's her birthday was just 103 years old, she would like that had it closed off as well, so would the church. It's only three, it's only three houses in there, me, the church, and the neighbor that's across the street. So yes, if that was closed off, that would be a blessing, blessing in disguise.
Yeah, I'll get with the city manager and the city attorney, see what we, what we need to do to try to get that closed.
Thank you. Some of the guys here, they've been trying to help me get it going. It's 612 Second Avenue.
And the house you're talking about been there 20 years?
Well, my house, my house made, my house made a start in this. I just got, the mayor said he's going to bring that sign out, so.
Been there over 20.
But that house in there coming out there that's abandoned, like I said, they boarded up, now you're going up under the house to get inside. So it's, it's, it's a problem.
All right.
And thanks a lot.
Stay back after the meeting, and we'll get someone to talk with you. Any other citizens to be heard?
Lewis Gordon, I live on Two Shannon Circle, Unit 8. I grew up in Valdosta, particularly on the east side of Valdosta. My mama stay on 709 Volatton. I go and see her every day. I've taught martial art in my neighborhood for about 17 years now. Everybody who live in that neighborhood, they know me. I hardly wear shoes and I talk to everybody, you know, it's a real close knit neighborhood. I have noticed, especially since I've gotten back from the neighborhood, went in 2010, came back in 2015, the neighborhood is in decline. And I now work for an organization that canvases door to door, speaking with citizens at every part of Valdosta, particularly though on the east side of Valdosta. One of the things that we keep hearing is we really do need more for the kids, we need more for the youth. I know recently we were just able to get a basketball court, and it is constantly in use. There is a lot of energy in the youth in this city. And if it is not focused, we will have problems. If one basketball court can improve the quality of life of the kids that live there, that, that lot, that piece of land that is called Volatton Park, it is mainly just an open lot, and then there's Mr. Beans right there, and then there's some playground equipment that got more rest than it got kids on it. If we can do something to properly utilize that area, I think that that would go a long way to solve a lot of the attitude in that area. way to solve a lot of the attitude in that area about the city. I used to hear a lot of times before people care what you think, they have to think that you care. And giving people a neighborhood that they can take pride in, our kids shouldn't have to go to some other park to utilize, like to get some recreational activities that are different than just, you know, basketball or, you know, somebody bringing football out to the thing, right? I think that this is a unique opportunity for us to step up to the challenge and provide for the future. Because right down the street, what we call Volatton Park, the youth complex, if you, if you frequent it, you'll notice that there's graffiti, and some of it's getting torn down. I know we just didn't work there. And I think a great part of that, though, is people are also watching how we spend our money. They've noticed that we've torn the trees down, but we haven't provided anything. So I think it's just a unique opportunity, and if, you know, if there's any chance for us to get there and build up something for them, that would be very powerful. Thank you.
If I'm not mistaken, I think we just got a grant for Volatton Park. I had to take a look at it and see, but I believe we just did get a.
We got a grant of that area. He's private property he's speaking of.
The property behind Mr. Bees?
Yeah, that's private property.
Okay. Yeah, if you pay back, we'll get with you again on.
And y'all keep seeing my face.
No problem. Are there any other council, I mean, any other citizens to be heard? If not, we'll go to city managers to report.
Thank you, Mayor Protem. We have a lot of upcoming events around the city, starting tomorrow at 5 o'clock. We have our first Friday after 5:00. We're going to have a hula hoop contest, which starts at 6:00 at Benny's Alley behind Southern Cellar. We'll have Bill the Sandcastle Station that's been moved to Unity Park. We have food trucks at various locations. We have live music behind Stogies, Southern Cellar, Art and Soul. And we have a photo contest. It says snap photos at the booth with your friends in beach attire and enter to win $100, $100 in downtown dollars with only one caveat, and that's no bikini's, all the attire must be family-friendly.
I wanted to wear a bikini.
You wanted to wear. On Saturday, July 15th, starting at 9:00 a.m., we have cleanup day at Greer Community. And for more information, for more information, please call Shandra McAllister with the Public Works Department, 229-539-3999. Volunteers are desperately needed for this cleanup. We also have on Tuesday, July 18th, the Chamber of Commerce is hosting women, mentoring women starting at 11:30 at the Mackey. If you would like to sign up, please go to the Chamber of Commerce site. July 19th, which is on a Wednesday, we have our infamous Battle of the Badges blood drive. Please come out and support either organization at the city Hall Annex Multipurpose Room, 2 to 6 p.m. July 22nd, we have from 10 to 2 our Christmas in July in downtown. And on July 24th, which is a Monday at 5 p.m. at the Turner Arts Center, we have our photo contest, award, and reception. That's it.
Thank you. Catherine? We're at the portion of our meeting where we have our council comments. Before I turn over council, I just want to say one thing. Summertime is hot. Y'all see our Public Works Department out? These guys are working hard. It's hot. Y'all taking a bottle of water. It's cold, it's hot. Look out for our people who keep our city clean. Go around the table, any council members have any comments?
Well, I just want to say, I think it's very refreshing to see the citizens come into the council meeting to speak up, ask questions, and get involved, and show that you're interested in what's going on in your city. I advise that you come pass the word, let them know that the city council is a public assembly, and that they can come there, find out a lot of information out. As I've noticed, some of the people, citizens who came today, they did find some information out, and it's a good thing, and it's very refreshing. Not only say I encourage it.
The Zaya City Women Club will be doing a street cleanup Saturday from 9:00 to 11:00, and these are seasoned females that will be picking up paper on Woodland, starting at 9:00 a.m. And Jeanette Cootie, who is 100 years of age, will be in that group. So if you see us out picking up paper, as Councilman Howard said, stop by and give us a bottle of water. We're going to be hot. So we're going to be there from 9:00 until 11:00. The Zaya City Women Club.
Mr. Mayor Protem, without objection, I make a motion to adjourn.
So do you.
All in favor?